Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting into order. If you all could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting into order. If you all could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Yeah, sorry about that. I need to repeat it. Gardner?
Here.
Christie?
Here.
Deacon?
Here.
Pomelo?
Here.
Strobing?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
And Watson?
Here.
All are present?
Thank you. Minutes of previous meetings.
Yep, so we're doing the approval of the minutes from the June 3rd, 2025, and from the June 14th, 2025 Town Council meetings.
I make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Second. We got a motion and it's seconded, all in favor? Do you need any more? Petitions and communications, we have none. We'll move on to report of the town manager.
Because last week was the 4th of July, we were thinly staffed and we did not have it, so we postponed it, so I have nothing to report.
Could we have Mary approach the microphone?
Good evening, everybody. Mr. Watson, could you join me here at the podium? Brandon, it's my pleasure on behalf of the Town Council and the citizens of Standish to present you with this plaque for your duties as Town Council Chair during 2025.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do have another presentation this evening. This is on behalf of Carlista Cross, and it's for... Step forward, please. Carlista, would you like to come up?
Ms. Cross, if you give me your camera, I'll take your picture.
Oh, okay. Please do. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, these are presented to you, would you like to? These lovely plaques were created by Carlista. So, it's to honor you for the work that you've done with her Bridge program.
Thank you.
And the plaques recognize your father, Robert Libby, who served in the Coast Guard during World War II.
Did.
And then your grandfather, Albert Libby, who served in the Army in World War I.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful.
Nice.
Very nice.
Wait, let me get that picture.
Sure.
You wanna hold them up?
There's a little story behind this.
It's beautiful.
I wonder if you could take time out, let him tell the story about his grandfather and father in the military and one was in Normandy, and thank you.
Very short, because you guys have business to do.
Yes, sir.
But my grandfather was a main guy in Fisher Bagel pretty much every day of his life. And, but he was in World War I and was shot going from trench to trench while he was in the Army. And he carried a bullet with him for the rest of his life, so worked for the town of Buxton and hit a pretty good limp, but had a great life. My father was at Normandy, and toward the end of his life, he never told me a word about it, because you know how those people were, you know, the Greatest Generation never spoke at all about anything. But he did tell me toward the end how horrible it was, and one of the ships that he was the engineer for, when the troops got out into the water and stormed the beach, he said his worst moment was when he saw some of his comrades drown just getting to the beach. So, sometimes I feel like we don't know how lucky we have it here. It's nice to get awards, but I wish I could kind of send them upstairs to my father and grandfather. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Gonna move on to public hearings.
We have, thank you, we have sixty-eight dash twenty-five applications submitted by Vino Bodega, Inc., doing business as Silly's located at 131 Osiphe Trail West, for a new on-premises malt liquor, beer, and wine Class A restaurant license ordered that the application submitted by Vino Bodega, Inc., doing business as Silly's located at 131 Osiphe Trail West, for a new on-premises malt liquor, beer, and wine Class A restaurant license is approved by council to expire as determined by the Department of Public Safety.
This is the first-time license. Is there any public comments? Yeah, come on up. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Colleen Kelly, I live at sixteen Alzirus Road in Standish.
Okay, thank you.
I'm...
Do you have any comments that you would like to say about the...
Well, I'm very excited, if you guys approve me, that would, I will make sure that I'm a responsible human being and make sure everybody's safe and responsible for not over-consuming of alcohol, but it's beer and wine, and I do make sangria, and people have been asking for the bottom-of-the-hill mimosa, which is Tang and Pap's Blue Ribbon.
Yes, ma'am. Awesome. If the people are asking for it, why not?
Yeah. It's delicious.
All right, anything else?
No, thanks, thank you.
Thank you for coming up.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Not yet, one second, Terry. No.
He wants to ask her a question.
Absolutely.
Once I close the public hearing, I'll ask the council, and then he can ask her. If you want to just hold on right there, are there any council comments?
Dillys, what's Dillys?
Silly's, S is in Sam. Yeah. Yes. It's, like, it's from Portland, I've lived out here for thirty years, and I'm tired of commuting, so I decided to open it here.
Good for you.
Instead of Portland, yeah.
That should be it, yeah, thank you.
It was, it was, yeah, it was, it was a great move, I mean, I sold the properties in there to take care of my dying parents, so they have since deceased, and so now I can do this.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Mr. Pomelo?
I'm just so glad to have you come to Standish, I know you're in Portland for so many years, and we're glad to have you here, and you're gonna bring a great, great business to this town, thank you for coming.
Thank you, I appreciate that, that's very kind.
Mr. Watson?
I was just gonna throw a pitch out there, if anybody's eaten there yet, go try it, because everything I've had is really good.
Thank you, it was very, very nice, thank you.
Ms. Stuber?
Um, Strobing?
Strobing.
That's okay, no worries, I did read the packet, thank you for including the extra map. Question on the outdoor seating, you had mentioned five tables, is that a fenced-in area where it's posted no alcohol beyond these...
It is not.
Is it going to be fenced?
I will do whatever you want me to do.
Well, I think, I think code says outdoor has to be fenced.
It has to have stanchions?
Do bed frames count? Because I spray painted bed frames and I...
As long as, is it blocked off from the public?
It will be, if that is the code. I haven't done it yet.
Mary, Mary, you're more familiar with this than I am, it has to be blocked off, correct?
The outside...
If, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I can make that happen, no, no worries. Yes, anything else?
Ms. Mary?
The outside seating area does have to be fenced in, they can use stanchions or some other method of...
Bed frames, then yes.
Yeah, I've got some antique bed frames.
I like it.
Fantastic.
Perfect, love it.
Okay.
Awesome.
Yes, I'll make it happen.
Thank you.
Anything else that I should, you know, I did have a question, actually. Are they still, I was, I was out of it during COVID, is it still, do I have the ability to sell if somebody wants, some sangria and wants to take it home? Does that stand, like, do you remember during COVID, did they ever rescind that, or...
I think that's your state liquor license, I'm not sure that's the town.
How does the town feel about it?
Yeah, we can, we can check on, I'll chug into the details on that tomorrow.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, we'll go back to you.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
I have a conflict of interest, so I'll be abstaining from the vote today.
Okay, thank you. I see no other comments, can we take a roll call?
Yeah, Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Strobing?
Yep.
And Watson?
Yes.
All right, six yeses.
Committee reports. And we'll start down here with Mr. Deacon.
Nothing to report at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing to report from the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Watson?
Finance's meeting tomorrow, and orders have not yet met this month, so nothing to report today.
Capital met tonight, we're bringing some stuff forward a little later tonight.
Later tonight, thank you. Appointments committee did have a couple interviews this evening, and will be, further information will come out later on. Consent calendar, there are no consent calendar items on the agenda for this evening, so we'll move on to unfinished business. Election of council chair and vice chair.
Yeah, sure, so we're gonna go ahead and start with the election of the council chair, so I'd like to call for nominations right now for town council chair.
I'll nominate John Gardner.
I'll second.
Nominated in second? Mr. Deacon?
I nominate Councilor Thomas.
Second.
Nominated in second?
All right, do I hear any other nominations? All right, nominations have ceased, hearing no other. So, we have a couple different voting options, would you like to do show of hands or a paper ballot?
Show of hands. Show of hands.
Sure, so since Gardner was nominated first, we're gonna start with him. If I could get a show of hands, we're gonna call for the vote for John Gardner for town council chair. So, we have one, two, three, four, which meets the minimum requirement. We'll go ahead and continue with the vote for Thomas, so vote for Jennifer Thomas for town council chair, can I get a show of hands? All right, that's three, so John Gardner is our town council, the chair.
Thank you very much, appreciate your votes. We will move on to election of the vice chair.
I have a nomination.
And, yes, sir.
I nominate Lisa Strobing for vice chair.
I second that.
Nominated in second? Do we have any other nominations?
I'll nominate Brandon Watson for vice chair.
I'll second that. Nominated in second. And we will conduct the vote for Strobing, right?
Strobing.
Strobing, I'll get it.
Strobing, yeah.
Strobing, I'll get it, I will get it. If we can have show of hands? And for Mr. Watson?
So, that's...
Three votes for, for Mr. Strobing, and four for Mr. Watson, he will be the vice chair for the upcoming year. Moving on. Angela?
All right, so fifty-seven dash twenty-five amendments to Standish Town Code, Chapter 181, land use, town avenues, street standards, this is the first reading. The town of Standish hereby ordains that Chapter 181, land use, town avenues, street standards, B and hereby is amended as follows. Additions are underlined, deletions are struck out. Form-based code village districts, E, Standish Corner District Standards, Town Avenue Standards, SCD, Street Space Standards, TA, the location with distances, amenity zone, five feet both sides, on SCD, street parking, eight feet, and then they added allowed, one side only. Bike lane, five feet both sides, and travel lanes, eleven feet, two lanes.
Any public comments? Yes, sir. Please state your name and your address.
Ada Lampron, 129 West Leeway.
Did I misunderstand, did this reading say that there's going to be one side of parking?
That's what it says, under...
It's allowed, but not required.
It's going to be optional on one side.
Okay, okay, good, that's all in, thank you.
Izzy Higgins, 215 Bonny Eagle Road. Do we have, where does the town avenue, this is the town avenue section, is there an area where this starts, this doesn't? Is there a visual you can put up?
Yes, just one moment.
Where are they?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting them to...
Trying to figure it out right now.
Zach's putting up a map.
He's trying to get, there it goes, someone on the screen over here, Terry, now.
So, these, these purple segments that you see, I can scroll in a little bit, but the purple segments are the existing town avenue. So, from Georgie Jack down a few properties here on that side, and then down a little ways on Bonny Eagle, from the intersection down here. And then there's a section of Blake Road that's also town avenue. But keep in mind, too, that Town Avenue is also one of the only two streets that can be built in the form-based code as well. So, there could be, there could be a future, yeah.
That a street can be built?
Yep.
Okay.
So, there could be a future Town Avenue street.
Okay, and the amenity, the amenity zone, is that sidewalk, is that trees and berms, is what?
Uh, that's...
I apologize for not...
The amenity zone, I don't know offhand, Izzy, how, how it's defined. But I don't think, I don't think we're getting rid of the amenity zone on Town Avenue.
So, this is...
My understanding was this was just to make it optional, but...
I can actually speak to that.
Go ahead, Jim.
The purpose of this was, there is a business park that wants to develop feeding onto Route 25.
Okay.
And so, the current code requires on-street parking.
Got it, okay.
And so, the developer wanted the option to not have on-street parking, because there will be sufficient parking
in, in, within the businesses that are going in. Okay, okay, all right, that makes sense, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none? Are there any council comments, Mr. Deacon?
Yes, to help the public understand, can you perhaps clarify what it means to be a town avenue and why isn't it bigger or cover a larger area?
Right-of-way with, and basically areas that the town would have to maintain, so if it's on-street parking and it's within the right-of-way, that'd be area that the town would be responsible for, for maintaining within that, I believe it's a sixty-six-foot right-of-way. Doing that from memory right now, versus most of our local roads are fifty-foot right-aways, so it allows for that.
And if you don't maintain it, who would?
So, if it's in the right-of-way, it would be us, it would have to be out of the right-of-way for not, not to be a part of it.
So, we, so if, if this were not a town avenue, who would, who would maintain it?
So, if the parking was within, it'd have to be out of the right-of-way to not be town-maintained.
Who would maintain it?
Privately.
Privately?
Yep.
Okay. Who decides which side of the street has the parking or no parking?
That would be going through planning board and having that discussion to, you know, depending on the availability of parking for the businesses and everything else, the planning board would have that say into that, along with staff comments.
Has the, the town commission that's planning the future development of the town had any thoughts or comments or perspective as to whether the Town Avenue is sufficiently designated? Should it be bigger, should it be other streets?
There's been nothing that's come out of the comp plan about that specifically, it's been... There's been nothing that's come out of the comp plan about that specifically, it's been, we've, we're, we're going to talk about it more in the future, basically what, what we want to see in the Form-Based Code. But there's other-
So maybe, it could be that the comprehensive plan could address this again in the future and maybe designate larger areas or other potential streets, is that right?
What we know is that we want to look at the Form-Based Code and certain aspects of it, and that will, you know, take place through Ordinance Committee and everything in the future.
Okay, and has, is there a public safety concern as to where the parking is put, or perhaps that'll be considered by the Planning Board? I'm just concerned about congestion.
That's where staff comment comes in through the planning process, if there's a concern that comes up versus what could be better, better done for safety concerns, that's how we address that through the planning process.
And is there any consideration of sidewalks on the side that will have the parking? Or perhaps is that something that the Planning Board would address that perhaps the need for the side that does have the parking might need to have sidewalks?
That's also through the planning process, depending on what they're building and everything to what they need for sidewalks.
Is there any consideration of shade trees?
Usually they have a landscape plan, again, that's all through a Planning Board type of deal of street, street plans, street trees as they call them, based on the-
I believe in the Town Avenue, it's one every fifty feet.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Watson?
I'd like to just kind of elaborate more on what Counselor Thomas said, this is a lot to try and help Standish be more business-friendly and allow business owners and developers to save costs on streets by not requiring a larger road, more unpunishable services like tar and asphalt. And to allow, to make business more Standish-friendly, we need, historically Standish has been anti-business, and we need to kind of right that ship, and this is a little, little piece to try and correct the trajectory of the town.
Mr. Pomelo?
I think Counselor Watson said it all, it just gives businesses a second option for parking, if they're willing to provide off-street parking. It gives them options that will definitely promote business in this area, and that's what we need, we're looking at a walking villages, and this would add to businesses in the walking villages, so I support this.
Alright, no, no other comments, we'll move to a roll call, which will move the item to a public hearing at the eighth August twelfth meeting. Ms. Thomas is going to abstain, not vote, but, could you call the roll call, please?
Yeah. I thought Ms. Thomas abstained on the last one, are you abstaining on this one?
I'm sorry, I need to abstain on this one.
Sorry, you're correct, okay.
I thought you had said this one too, because-
I, I think I did.
Maybe last meeting too, and-
At the last meeting, I had said that.
Alright, Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yep.
And we have Thomas as abstained and Watson?
Yes.
Perfect, that's six yeses.
It, it will pass and move forward. We'll now go to new business.
Yep, so we have sixty-nine dash twenty-five amendments to Standish Town Code, Chapter 181, Land Use Regarding Orchard Road Solar, Solar Contract Zone. The Town of Standish hereby ordains that Appendix D attached to Section 181-11 dot 20 of the Code of Ordinances, B and hereby is repealed by its entirety and replaced by Appendix D attached here too. Please see attachment.
Zach, do you have any comments on this?
Yeah, just quickly before the applicant, the applicant is obviously here, but just quickly, this is a contract zone amendment to a currently existing approved contract zone that the Town Council approved in April of twenty, twenty twenty-two. And so this, this is coming, you'll see this is the, this is the currently approved contract zone that includes three properties on the screen. And all, the applicant is asking to remove a couple of properties and make the project smaller, essentially, is the, is the main idea here. But just so you're familiar, con, you know, contract zone is basically a rezoning of the property and is, you know, a specific agreement between the Town of Standish and the, and the developer. So, you know, if you have any more process questions, let me know, but I'll let the applicant kind of explain what's changing with this, with this new proposal.
Okay, any public, public comments, please state your name and your address?
Yep, Adrian Fine, Civil Engineer at Terradyne Consultants, here to represent the project tonight, or the amendment to the contract zone. Zach kind of gave a overview of, the overall ask is to change the contract zone to reduce the size of it. It currently was approved with three parcels, the project has changed, and we are reducing the size of the contract zone to just be on one parcel, you can go to the next slide. So it's just going to be Lot 69F. And previously, the proposed project, which is a large-scale solar project, was going to be across both parcels, and it is reduced in size and only going to be on this parcel where the contract zone is proposed now. So that's kind of the, the bulk of the changes as far as access and anything else in the contract zone, that all remains the same. We're not proposing any changes to where we're accessing the solar array. So if you want to quickly show the next plan, this is the, this is the size of the array.
There we go.
That one, yeah. This was the size of the array when it was previously approved, when the original contract zone was approved, and as you can see, it's on two parcels. And the road is more on that northwesterly side, crossing the wetlands, and then the solar array is outlined in red, and then if you go to the next slide, Zach. That same road is crossing the wetlands at the top there, but then we no longer have solar on that parcel, it's only below in the area outlined in red. And so we no longer need the contract zone on that upper parcel as well. I'll turn it over to Andrew to provide a little more context about the, the solar and the contract zone text.
Great, thanks. Andrew Keller, here as the developer, but also the landowner. Since we originally had entered into this contract zone, there was a different landowner in place, so I purchased this land. What I wanted to share with the council tonight is that, as Adrian shared, due to circumstances out of our control related to the state and the CMP approval process, the project has had to shrink. We're happy to share some details if the council's interested in some of those nuances, but this is where we are landing now, and nothing in the contract zone is changing. There was a, I would call it, a key benefit to the town was to provide ten thousand dollars to the fire department for a piece of equipment that could help in the case of any emergencies that were needed at a site like this or other facilities. We are honoring that, even though the project size has shrunk, our revenue was cut in half, but we've maintained the, what we agreed to originally with the town to make sure the fire department had that piece of equipment, to my knowledge, I believe they've already purchased it. So we worked with Zach and the town, the new town attorney to go through the contract, make sure that everything was cleaned up. Your attorney had a chance to put their eyes on it, make sure it was, it was consistent legally, and then we agreed to make that payment to reimburse the fire department, I think it was within sixty days after signing Zach's contract. Correct, yeah. So, it was before it was set up, so we were gonna do it when we started construction, this has been a pretty long drawn-out process because of the permitting process with the utility and some of the state policies that have changed, so we wanted to kind of bring that forward, recognizing that the town, I wasn't honestly aware that the town had spent that money yet, because we hadn't gotten to the point where we had a project that was ready to go. But we're happy to honor that and want to keep the process moving forward, and we understand there's some steps, even though it's an amendment we have to go through, so we're, want to kick that off tonight and keep going through the process. But happy to answer any questions, if the board has specific technical questions, Adrian can take care of it, if there's anything specific to why are we here three years later and why didn't it get built, I'm happy to answer some of those specific questions if you have any.
And just to clarify this, obviously, we'll, we'll start the council process tonight here, but before finishing council, you know, the usual three-meeting amendment process, it will, it will go to the Planning Board for site plan review as well, so, that's-
Thank you. Alright, thank you, we'll finish public, public comments and then we'll move to council comments, so, thank you. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll move, is there any council comments? Alright, Mr. Deacon?
Thank you. Could someone tell me the historical use of the land prior to this time, was it used for firing, I know some of the area nearby may have been?
So, again, Andrew Keller, so the prior use, I think there was some select foresting of the land, but otherwise, I think it was originally, I purchased it from the floor, Mark and Judy Floor, I believe is her first name. And I think that was part of the original plan for the community that's in front there, so I think they had maybe some intentions of making it larger. That didn't work out, I think, for different reasons, it's a major wetland that separates where the parcel land that I own and where the property is, was developed. And so this was just an, an alternative use that we were interested in, in purchasing the land for.
Okay, and I realize that some things were done a number of years ago and, you know, after the fact, Monday morning quarterbacking, but it has been raised that solar farms have been replacing farmland. And some people see it as, well, you know, farming is a perilous business, you're subject to the weather, and having income from a solar array might be a good thing for many farmers to have consistent income to help protect them from the forces of nature that are unpredictable. On the other hand, if land that could be open space in some way is used for solar farming, well, we might need it as a good source of renewable energy. There are ways to maybe have a both-and rather than an either-or. One of the both-and's is that instead of having these solar arrays close to the ground, that they're raised up and that the arrays, this would allow some types of farming below that. And there is also evidence that I'm aware of, some studies that show that actually that could increase the fertility of the land by having the solar arrays raised up, and that- So my point is, have you considered, or maybe you want to consider, or maybe the Planning Board might consider suggesting that the arrays be elevated to allow an alternate use of farming potentially below what would otherwise be just low-set arrays. Throwing that out, I realize that you've got many years of planning and thought into this.
Right.
But this is a subject that has been raised all over the country, including in Maine, and I, I would support, I see the need to having renewable energy sources, and it's good to have some in our community. And I would just ask that you might consider this, or the Planning Board might consider this, if it's possible to do.
Yeah, no, great, great comment and great question wrapped in one, we're very familiar with that, they call it agrivolt, agrivoltayek, bit of a multiple there. And it's exactly what you said, it's dual-use, the intention is to use the land around the solar panels for multiple things. Raising up the panels do add a cost of almost, almost doubles the price of a project, because you're putting more steel in the ground and you're raising everything up, you know, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen feet at the lowest point. So all the engineering that we've done has been, so CMP, once we resized the project, we went back to CMP with all of our engineering for this specific use and location and size, so that's been approved by CMP, so we're all set with CMP, which is great. And now we're just coming back through the town process to re-approve it, make sure the town is comfortable with what we've done for change, made for changes. One thing that I will share, so we won't be able to raise it to do like, you know, growing vegetables underneath, but one thing that we have done, and I was fortunate enough to permit the first project in New Hampshire, not too far away from here in Wolfboro, where it's gonna be used, so we're gonna bring in the local sheep to take care of all the grass underneath it, instead of using any kind of mechanical usage for cutting the grass, which we don't include any chemicals in any of our treatment of vegetation, we always only do mechanical. But when there's an opportunity and if there is a local farmer that has an interest in that, we're all, that's actually a pretty great way to utilize the land in both ways, and it helps the local farmer, keeps the grass down low, so if anybody knows anything like that in the community and they want to come to the Planning Board, we would love to meet them and talk to them about it and maybe have some form of dual-use like you described.
And just a question, when the map was displayed, there were some non-solar corners, where, where, there's a portion where there was no solar array noted on the map.
Right.
Any particular use planned for that?
Not necessar, so there's a couple of things, and you bring up a good point, so some people, if they were on the council before or listened into the Planning Board before, there is a snowmobile trail that comes through that property. And so we worked during the planning process last time to make sure that the snowmobile trail is not affected, we're gonna move it, and the snowmobile team, tree club was willing to work with us just to kind of bring it around the outside of where the fence line was, so that way there was still movement through the property, and as a landowner, I was happy to do that with them. So it opens up some space for them, but the reason you're seeing open space physically around it is because we have a limit on how big of a system we can build under the current rules with CMP. So we just kind of matched it up in the kind of most condensed locations, so we can manage the project correctly, we can build it efficiently as possible, so you're seeing a little, if you look behind, you can see a little bit of that open area to the lower corner, again, would just be open space.
Again, the last suggestion, and again, I understand you've already had many years of planning and maybe some of this is not practical, but there could be a potential for Maine wildflowers, or maybe something to help the bees out.
Yep, we love the bees.
But, you know, I don't know how the sheep feel about the wildflowers, but having Maine wildflowers might help keep it beautiful as well as do something for Mother Nature indirectly.
I think, I forget what our planning conditions were, but back when we were going through the Planning Board process, that was a pretty important discussion being, taking place in Maine about some of the different vegetation around it, was like a pollinator pathway, so it allows that wildflower growth to naturally come up, and then you don't have to maintain that as much as like traditional grass, where you might cut that down a few times. There is a balance of efficiencies in the operations and maintenance, but also the beautification of it, so yeah, definitely take all those considerations into mind, and I did want to make one other point to the council, I forgot to state in my opening, was that the other use of the land, the council may be aware of this, it's gone through the planning process, I believe it's been conditioned that for the apartments that are gonna be built next door, they wanted to make sure that we came forward to do our part to make our project smaller, so therefore they could meet a lot of their requirements at the Planning Board level. So we've worked really closely, who, that was originally a kind of a project partner, we were gonna lease the land from them, and then when they said that they were moving in a different direction, we honored that, we terminated the agreement, moved forward with a smaller project, and we're here tonight because we want to make sure their project brings more housing into the community, which I'm pretty sure is important, I haven't followed that very closely, but we're just doing our part to make sure that we help them keep their process moving forward too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Strubing?
You're written there. Compared to the previous appendix, the term interalia has been added to this one, which means, among other things, I would, I would like to have that clarified, because that could mean anything. Page one. Page one, third paragraph, authorizing interalia, large-scale ground-mounted solar, which means solar and other stuff can happen there.
Okay.
And I, I mean, you just mentioned having sheep in, but if there's gonna be other things there, that interalia scares me.
I'm gonna go out on a limb here and say that that was probably not a red line that we added in, so we can maybe check with the red line-
I'll check with the attorney, because I believe they, I believe that our attorney added that in.
That's not a language I would typically personally put into a contract, so there might have been a reason the, the town attorney had put that in there, but if you have a concern, I mean, it doesn't hurt our feelings if it gets taken out, the only intent of this land is to be used for this purpose, as described.
And that makes sense, but it does concern me because it gives, it gives you guys liberty to do other things. Is it 100 Orchard Road or Orchard Street?
Road.
Road.
And on page two, fourth paragraph, NHGS is a typo, that's not gonna nullify anything, right?
No, that, what was the, what was the acronym?
NHSG is what it should be.
Got it.
Yeah, we can change that.
Okay.
We can, we can still make, we can still make those minor changes now.
Okay. And page four, B, the second paragraph from the top, it says that, that it can be accessed by a private way that meets the standards of one that serves two residences. There's a subdivision back there, is that still considered two residences?
There's a subdivision in front.
Yep, they're gonna have, they're using that road to, to access, right, so?
They will, yes.
Yeah, I can, I can explain that, so the access road for the solar will be an extension off of Rose Lane where it currently ends today. And that is what's approved to be the private way sized the same as the ordinance defines as a private way for two residences. That is going to cross the wetland and extend to the solar array for access. Any portion of that road that then becomes access-
Any portion of that road that then becomes access to the Abutters Housing Development that's in process would have to be upgraded to meet all the requirements of their site plan approval. And then, this road would extend off of the end of wherever their road ends, if that makes sense. Their road isn't built yet, so we are building access to the standards that we are required to use from the end of Rose Lane now. And then, at which time, they have to improve their land for their own development. It will change slightly up until the wetland where their project is approved by the planning board.
Okay. And then, the future connectivity via Cohen Road, that's gonna be 66 feet wide?
Yeah, that's the right-of-way that continues per the master plan in the same location. That was, that's always been part of our plan, the old approval and this approval. It's the 66-foot wide right away.
Okay, all right. And on page five, it, what's a reasonable amount of time? It says, talking about termination, it says reasonable. What is reasonable? Six months, one year, five years?
I think, we, we think three to five.
Can we, can that be in there instead of reasonable? Because that leaves it open to interpretation.
As long as, are you willing to agree to that, Andrew?
Could you point out what line that is in section?
Page five, it's halfway down section F. It's on the right-hand side.
We got it. Let me just take a quick read real quick.
That's essentially a sunset clause.
Yeah, because, yeah, it's interesting because we have three years to develop the solar project, which is fair and appropriate, aligns with some other deadlines that we have to meet anyways. And then, reading down to it, it says. So, is the, is the reasonable associated with the cure?
Yes.
And so, 30 days thereafter. So, wouldn't we just do 30 and 30? I mean, kind of standard issue kind of stuff? Like, you have 30 days to, if there's a, if there's some type of breach, you usually have 30 days to cure it. And then, maybe there's some discussion, then maybe there's another 30 days. I think, is that kind of the intent to where you're kind of looking at that?
That's kind of where I'm going. Yeah, I'd like, I'd prefer to see a timeframe in there than reasonable.
Yeah, let's, Zach, let's do 30 and 30. I think that seems appropriate. Again, if something's wrong, you guys say something's wrong, or we say something's wrong, we work through it in 30 days. And if we aren't quite there yet, we need another 30 days. At least it's good this time to keep going and try to resolve it versus getting lawyers involved and getting it.
Makes sense, makes sense. And then, the reimbursement, which was a lovely thing, the $10,000 to help fund the fire equipment that's gonna be required, did you research? And that was, that's like a general idea or, I haven't, I don't know what they spent. I haven't asked.
Yeah, I think there was a wish list originally. And we discussed it as part of this process before. We had some discussion with the fire department, see what was needed. At the time, I could respect the fact that the fire department, there was a lot of solar activity in Maine. That settled down pretty dramatically and is gonna continue to die off. So, like, the thought of like having a solar array in every corner of your town is probably not the reality. And I don't even know how many projects have gotten built or are gonna get built. So, with that in mind, I understood they wanted a little bit more. But I think as time went on, and maybe they purchased it, were comfortable with the fact that we agreed, we can allocate $10,000. If you guys want to buy a $20,000 piece of equipment, that's your business. But here's 10, after our contribution, let's move forward. So, so a little bit of discussion, but not, I didn't do a lot of time researching exactly what the piece of equipment was because I am not the expert in that world.
All right, thank you. So, then, the, if we vote tonight, the changes that we said would happen will happen?
Let me clarify.
Are we voting on it as is?
I will, I will explore the, the interalia thing and also add in that 30, 30. You know, and I will bring that document. I'll clarify that, see, see what the response is from our attorney, go from there. But the document I bring back, this will come back to council next month.
Okay.
And those changes will be reflected.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
To clarify, though, are we voting on the changes or are voting on as is here? Because.
You're voting essentially as, as it is.
As it is.
But I, I've taken, you know, I will explore the, you know, do, do the changes.
But if we pass this tonight like this, then technically, this is moving forward.
Correct.
Okay.
But it will come back with the changes.
And then, we have to vote again later.
Once, once that second meeting occurs, though, that document should be as final as possible, once, next month.
Great. Ms. Watson.
Two things, one, to be fair, nothing against you guys, I already don't like solar arrays. But I like housing less. So.
We're not putting kids in schools.
If we, if we don't approve this, does that, is that gonna hinder the Rose Lane Apartments?
Yes, it would actually because our, because then our current contract zone would stand. And it would be, our approval would stand.
Yeah, I mean, so currently, there's a contract zone in place that just covers more land.
I've been attending the planning board meetings and yes, it will affect.
So, that's why I'm asking. So, and then, do you, you guys have any future plans for that land that won't be used for solar? Or any future development plans?
If you look at, I mean, there's some vernal pools in those wetlands, and they're called the back 40 there, which creates a, a big setback that restricts our options, really.
Yeah, so the portion of this parcel that's shown with solar is the only area that can really be used for anything.
Any development.
The rest is all vernal pools, wetlands, vernal pool setback areas that can't be touched. Maybe a very small amount could be permitted to be disturbed. But given also the large wetland crossing you would need to get back there, we're, for the solar, allowed to have that smaller private way for the, the two residents type of private way. If you were to do anything else back there, it would have to be a much wider road. So, that's a cost prohibitive reason to use this land for solar and also only half the parcels even, like upland.
So, you currently have no future plans for it?
I don't. As the owner, I don't. I mean, the intention was to buy it for this purpose.
Hey, can you tell me briefly the issues that caused you not to go with the larger system?
Of course. So, as I stated before, there was a lot of excitement around solar in the state. When it, the program first kicked off, there's a lot of projects that were put into the CMP and the other utilities interconnection queue. What that did is that triggered an effect of that much power going on to your local lines and how those go up onto the big, big transmission lines. So, ISO New England, which is the grid operator that oversees all of the electric grid in New England, got involved in the electrical engineering process we had to go through, went from the local level with CMP up to the regional level with ISO New England. That added about, we had gotten all of our approvals with CMP in like the first six, eight, 10 months, I think, originally. It added about two years of engineering work that we had to do with ISO New England and CMP. And then, when the information came back, they came back and said that the cost, not for just our project, for multiple projects in this region, in your town and other towns around here, was gonna be like upwards of like $1 to $2 million per project when you typically budget a couple hundred thousand dollars for those connection upgrades. And the biggest issue was they weren't gonna be able to do the work until 2027. So, and one last detail, if you did not build your project under Maine statute, by 20, the end of 2024, you couldn't build your project. So, you had engineering constraints, money constraints, and deadline constraints. The only way to fix that was to shrink, cut your project in half and do a project of this size. And then, you could stay underneath the current program.
Thank you.
Expensive and timely.
Thank you.
If I may, I'll just point out, did I see a hand?
I just think it's a good project. Any business in the state of Maine, you have to be ready to pivot at any minute. Something you didn't want to do, obviously. But if you're in business, you understand that it's, it's something that happens. And it happens more than most people know. So, I appreciate you pivoting in this direction and at least bringing this board and using a piece of wetland that would not, not just, would create some type of industrial.
Ms. Deacon.
Yes, thank you. There was a story on Maine Public Radio today about how the Public Utilities Commission and Central Maine Power and a bunch of other parties, you may be familiar with this story, yes. So, I don't have the exact name of the story, but if you search Maine Public Radio, you can probably find it. And it talks about how, how much there has been in solar development in the state. And for a variety of reasons, they're reducing the, the number of projects that are being done. So, those that may want further information might want to consult that story. Also, on the map, there's one thing I forgot to mention. Being a cartographer myself sometimes in the past, it's not in the legend, but it does look that there is an unimproved road that passes under the southern part of the array. There's actually two parts. And I'm wondering, is that right-of-way or unimproved road still going to be in use or?
That's the snowmobile trail.
It is.
That's the existing. It's shown on this map. But there's also a proposed relocation of it, just outside the fence line, shown on the map.
I see. So, where it does a Y and goes in two different directions, is the new proposed going to service going both? If you look at the east part, it comes in with one lane on an unimproved. And then, it wise out to the southeast and to the west.
Yeah, if you, if you were coming in from the northeast and right where you hit the red line, which is the fence line, the new snowmobile trail will then go towards the east around the fence and reconnect to the piece that is more on the southern side. And so, it, it continues the loop. We're not making it so they can't get to the same places they were able to before.
Very well.
It's just a slightly different alignment to go outside the fence.
Thank you for commenting.
Yes, Ms. Torres.
I appreciate you pivoting to a smaller project. The thing I like about this project is it brings tax dollars into the town, but it doesn't tax our services here in the town. It doesn't, won't tax our schools, it won't tax the grocery store, won't tax the transfer station, but it'll bring money into the town. Thank you.
Well said. Yes.
Can I just, just to clarify, Zach, we vote tonight, we're voting as is. You're gonna bring back another copy in a month that has changes in it?
Yep.
And then, we'll vote again?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
As long as this document is final by the last public hearing, where, you know, that, that's fine, really. It's just, and no material changes can be after that final meeting. But it's good to have this document as final as possible. But we can, we'll make those changes.
I believe last time for your, just as a, some historical, I think the first meeting was the most constructive. Second was, okay, we made those changes. Okay, maybe one last little tweak. And then, we came the third time, it was like, okay, it's the final doc. Do you guys, any other comments? I think the last meeting took us.
So, you've been through the, okay.
We've been through the process once before, yeah, so we're pretty familiar. So, we're, Zach and the new attorney will help make sure that next time you guys have, hopefully, the final version. And then, we still have to come back one more time for the final, that third meeting, for the town charter.
Thank you. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Zach, I do have a procedural question for you, though, with the changes. Are we, should we vote to have the changes, vote on those changes? Or we can all just ask for one, or do we just make the changes? You know what I mean?
No, I think.
Should we all agree on the changes or not?
Yeah, I think, I think there's consensus on, on those changes is what I gather. So, I can.
Bring it back.
Make those changes and come back.
Next month.
Next month.
Thank you. Make sure we're doing it right.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you to the board, appreciate your time, thank you.
All right.
Point of order. Did the folks come back up again? I have one question. Mountain View Lane, is that on that map? I don't see very well.
That's up above the map.
Yeah, I want to hear what they're saying, Phil.
Yeah, it's nowhere near Mount View.
It's not there.
I don't believe.
Half a mile away.
Yeah, I don't believe that's on here.
It's quite a ways from there.
Thank you.
This is now my Pupers ice cream.
All right, we gotta move, we gotta move on?
Yes.
If we could get a roll call?
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Nope.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
No.
All right, that is five yeses, two nos.
Motion passes.
Moving along, we have 70-25, award bid and authorized trust and roof replacement for a town of Standish Salt Building located at 150 Moody Road. Whereas, a bid process has been conducted for the replacement of the trust and roof for the town of Standish Salt Building in accordance with section 302F of the Standish Charter. Now, be it ordered that the attached bid from, for the trust and roof replacement at the Salt Building located at 150 Moody Road, as described in bid specifications, is hereby accepted with a cost not to exceed in the amount to be determined for the project. And the, and that the further order that the town manager is authorized on behalf of the town to execute related documents.
I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Pablo.
I'm gonna turn this over to John.
So, how this came up is MMA, which is our insurance company, did an inspection. This is for our old salt building that stores just salt. It was built in the early 90s. And over the course of the lifetime of it, 2015 of the 21 trusses have been broken, the cross members. And the insurance company was requiring roof replacement on that. So, it went to the voters to be approved this past June in the Capitol. There were 75,000 allocated for that at that time. We conducted a bid process because we obviously need to get this done before winter time to get that done. So, immediately, we did have multiple people call, but we only had one bidder on it. The bid came in at 58,070, which is underbid for that. This contractor's also done other projects within the town and has been with great communication with the town, so.
Thank you. Mr. Pablo, can we get the name of the company?
Now, I'd like to amend the order to add Atlantic Exterior for 58,070 and is coming in under bid that we had set aside 75,000 in the budget for.
All in favor? Six yeses.
So, six yeses on the amendment now?
Now, we will open it up to public comments. Seeing none, council comments? Seeing none, if we can take a roll call?
Gardner?
As amended, yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Excuse me, just a point of order because I had stepped out. Which are we voting on?
We are gonna be voting on the town of Standish Salt Building.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. I'm familiar with that.
No, no problem. And it is as amended, we did amend it and had a vote. And it passed six, six zero, so.
Thank you. I, I, I vote yes. You're doing the roll call now.
Yes, sir.
And then, Pomelo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Seven yeses. All right, and then, 71-25, waive bid process for purchase of new subcompact tractor, whereas.
I'd like to waive the reading.
Second.
I'd like to waive the reading. All in favor?
All in favor. All in favor?
In capital improvements tonight, we looked at some bidding on this and contracts on the tractors. And we felt that we didn't have enough information. So, we decided to table this for one month until we can get more information on the bid process of these, one, these tractors, the bids on the tractors. So, it was best interest to just table this for a month. And we'll come back next month with the bid process in place.
Yeah, so what we can do is go ahead and postpone it. And we'll go ahead and add August 12th as the date because if we do not specify the date, it will kill it.
Okay.
August, August 12th?
August 12th, our next regular town council meeting.
Okay. No, we're gonna table it for until next month.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, seventy-two dash twenty-five, amendments to the code of Town of Standish to add chapter one eighty-six. The Town of Standish hereby ordains that chapter one eighty-six be.
I can motion to waive the reading.
All in favor? So it goes.
Mr. Chair, can I touch on this real quick?
Uh, yes, please.
Uh, so we heard from a small group of citizens who were concerned about their rent increasing. So we heard that at the ordinance committee, discussed it a few times. Ultimately, the state is adopting rules that are more restrictive than what we are, we're proposing. So the ordinance committee in the town is recommending a no vote on passing this.
Thank you. Um, we'll open it up for public comments, and then we'll go to council. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move to council comments. Yes, Ms. Strubing?
LD seventeen twenty-three only applies to mobile home parks. It doesn't apply to people who own freestanding buildings or duplexes. It's only mobile home parks. So the state is only curbing the rent raises for mobile home parks, not for landlords who own more than ten units in town. So the mobile home parks would be limited, but not other landlords.
That was part of the, that was part of the conflict, is the only people that were complaining were the mobile home park residents. And if we did any sort of enforcement, we probably would've been targeting just the mobile park homeowners, or the association owners, which then would've been opened us up to legislation or in lawsuits against us by targeting specific landlords. And there's no other landlords that have more than ten buildings in town.
We know that for a fact.
Any other council comments? Yes, Mr. Deacon?
I'm concerned about the proposed cap that's talking about five or ten percent if the monthly rent is under five hundred dollars. The, the rate of inflation in this country, it is much less than that. And for many of, many people across America, including in Maine, who receive pensions or social security or such, the potential adjustments to those forms of income are typically either inflation or inflation minus a certain percent. And so I see that figure as excessively high and not justified by the circumstances. I understand that others may have a different opinion, but I, I see that amount as excessively high. And I would suggest or amend it to be no more than inflation minus a half percent.
It goes back to my point that we're not recommending to pass this.
I understand the not recommend, but we have not yet had any determination as to where, if there will be a vote or not.
We tried plugging in numbers. The park residents come in with, oh, maybe no more than ten percent or five percent. And if you do the numbers, if you're saying, well, we don't want to go more than ten percent a year, that's a hundred bucks a month, you know. And, and so now you're paying, you know, it was out of hand even at ten percent. At two percent, is it, is it too low? I don't know. That's where we were, we weren't ready to bring this forward, because we never got the right numbers in place where it would actually benefit the people that were in the mobile home parks, because it was always gonna be, if you wanna, what, kept at ten percent, they went to ten percent every year. Some, some people said, well, I really don't want to go to ten percent. But if, if you're cabinet, I have to go there every year regardless if I want to, because I might have a major project come in and cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. You never know when something is gonna pop up. So we were, we were spinning our wheels a lot in the committee. And the state of Maine, I know they're doing some work up there. Hopefully, they can figure it out, because we were struggling in ordinance to figure it out, that's for sure, with, with the information we're getting. So I think the good thing tonight is the vote no, and we'll work this down the road somewhere if we have to.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call? Oh, sorry.
That's all right. Going, going back to the, the, the letter, it says nearly all of the landlords turn out to be mobile home parks. Nearly is not a total. Does this include apartment buildings? Do we have apartment complexes going up?
John, do you have, Zach out, out there?
So there's the sixty units that's proposed. It hasn't had a final proposal yet, but I do not believe, I believe it's gonna be apartments or, you know, owner occupied, but I do not know that for sure. I don't know if they're selling individual units or not. Maybe, Zach. Rose Lane, this is gonna be apartments, correct, owned by the owners?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, in, in that case, then, there, there are some renters who would benefit from rent stabilization. They, they could benefit.
Are you, is this the, is this the public hearing on the rent stabilization ordinance?
Yes, it is.
Obviously, you saw the memo. I think the, the, over the, you know, last few months, council, the ordinance committee was approached to, to do this rent control ordinance. Obviously, you saw that the state has, has since passed this legislation that kind of limits rent increases in the mobile home parks statewide. So that's why it kind of staff was leaning towards not moving this forward, because I think, and that was the intent of not going back to ordinance committee, at that time anyway, in March, was to wait until that legislation, it was either passed or not passed. So, and since it's passed, that's, that's why the recommendation is there. But again, our ordinance was more than, would be eleven or more units, I believe, the way it's written. Even though it says ten here, I believe it would be eleven or more units, as the, as the ordinance is currently written.
How many apartments are going in at Rose Lane? Sixty-something?
Sixty.
Okay. So I think by moving this order forward, we would help the people in those apartments. By, by squatching it, the mobile home parks will be taken care of by the state, but there's nothing protecting people in those apartments.
Um, Zach, is this, is this written for mobile home parks in Standish, or all, does this include apartments, or is this just based on mobile homes?
It would be.
That we're voting on tonight?
Yeah, no, it would be, this, this ordinance, as it's written, applies to anybody, any owner with ele, eleven or more units.
Okay. Yes.
I will be abstaining from voting, because I have a conflict of interest.
No problem. It is what it is. Yes?
That being said, I have a question on page six, section one eighty-six point five. It talks about rent increases. Landlord chooses not to impose a rent increase for that particular unit, it expires. What's the timeline on the expiration? When do, when would they apply a rent increase, and when would it expire? I don't understand that section. Is there clarification?
Uh, which paragraph was it?
Uh, D.
D, thank you.
You betcha.
I think that all that means is it doesn't. I believe that's just saying that the rent increase is not carrying, if that person moves out, that doesn't carry forward with the housing unit.
Yep.
But if someone's, if someone doesn't move out, but they're, they wanna sign a new lease, the landlord doesn't, he chooses not to increase the rent, it says it expires. How long, is it like within the ninety-day timeframe of signing the new lease, or the forty-five-day timeframe of signing the new lease? There's really no definition around the expiration.
I can look into that further for you.
Thank you.
Seeing no more questions?
Point, point of order, I raised the issue of an amendment to page seven about the amount of the, limiting the amount of the increase. Was there a second, my suggestion for an amendment to that?
Did you make a motion?
I, I make a motion to limit the increase to be under one and two, to modify the end of both, to be as stated, or inflation minus one-half percent, whichever is less.
Any second. Seeing no second, the motion would fail?
And Bob, the reason I didn't second that is because this is set up the same way that LD seventeen twenty-three is for the parks.
Now we'll move to a roll call.
Way to vote.
Just one second. Okay, the ordinance committee is suggesting a no vote on this. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Good. Just, I just wanted to make sure we were.
I'm sorry, could you clarify that? I didn't hear clearly.
The ordinance committee is recommending a no vote on this. I just wanted to make sure we were voting correctly.
Yes, ordinance committee and town staff.
And the town staff is recommending a no vote on this.
All right, now we are moving for a vote.
Sure. Gardner?
No.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Pomelo?
No.
Strubing?
Yes.
Uh, Thomas has abstained, and then Watson?
No.
All right, so that's three yeses, three nos. So in the event of a tie, that will move to unfinished business at the next regular council meeting.
Excellent.
Okay, so up next is seventy-three dash twenty-five, amendments to the Town of Standish fee schedule. Order that the Town of Standish fee schedule is amended as follows. Effective immediately upon adoption for all the fees shown, additions are underlined and deletions are struck out.
Motion to waive the reading?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? So it passes. Mr. Watson, do you want to speak on this?
Yeah, essentially taking out a couple of things that were no longer needed, because they were no longer applicable to town, and changing the fee to, for the wedding ceremonies and the witnesses needed, to make it more updated with the surrounding towns also.
Okay, great, thank you. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, are there any council comments? Mr. Deacon, we'll come this way.
Sure. So when there are things like a carnival or a public event that has a large public presence, that may incur a lot of public safety potential costs or police presence. And I'm wondering if that low amount of a hundred dollars is really adequate to cover public safety costs that might be related to a, a public event that's large. For example, mass gathering application fee, two hundred fifty dollars. I mean, maybe it should vary depending upon the size of what, what is a mass gathering. And I could see potential police costs if, you know, if suddenly another Woodstock is planned in Standish somewhere, you know, we have lots of people come. That could be quite a cost. So I might, I would suggest that some other thought go into adjusting some of these that might have indirect costs as a result, such as the mass gathering or carnival as an example.
Thank you.
So staff is actually working on a special event permit, and we would never pay for fire police for someone else. Often when we have events, that's a charge, like they'll give a donation, or they'll pay for that specific rescue or something like that, that day. But again, staff is working on a special event form, and, and we would bring that to you. For the Town and Candy Bunk, we have one. It checks off every department. What do they need? What resources? And we put the fees on there. When they sign it, they're responsible for that.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that you're ahead of the, ahead of the gate. Thank you.
Excellent. Ms. Thomas?
Were there any policy changes with the wedding ceremonies, Angela?
No. Just the fees, there's, just the fee changes.
Okay.
We, of course, are going back to performing them. We stopped it for a little bit during COVID era, but we are going back to them, and all is the same.
Thank you.
Excellent. Ms. Strubing? I thought you had your hand up earlier.
I do ask a lot of questions, but nothing here.
Any other questions? Roll call?
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Seven yeses. Moving along to seventy-four dash twenty-five, accept resignation from budget committee member and public safety committee member. Order that the resignation of budget committee member Lisa Strubing, submitted on June fifteen, twenty twenty-five, hereby accepted. Further order that the resignation of public safety committee member Isabel Higgins, submitted on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, hereby accepted.
So the town council would like to thank Isabel Higgins for her service, and, and Lisa as well, for contributing and acknowledging, for the things they've done for the town. And we, we greatly appreciate it. Are there any public comments on this? Anybody like to say anything? Any council comments? And we will take a roll call.
Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
And so it passes.
All right, moving along to seventy-five dash twenty-five, town council appointments to various boards and committees, and the announcement of the town council chair committee appointments and standing committee appointments. Order the following town council appointments are made through the date shown. We have budget committee.
Make a motion to waive the reading?
Second. All in favor? Unanimous? So, uh, so the committees are as is? Do we need to read them off, or how would you like to?
Yeah, I don't know if any amendments needed to be made from the appointments committee earlier, or for the budget committee, or maybe the.
Yes, so for the budget committee, we would like to put.
We'll use the chairs. Are you making the amendments, Mr. Chair of the?
Oh, no, I am not.
Uh, so I would like to make an amendment that we had an interview with Chris Strubing to put him onto the Saco River TV and the Saco River Community Board. The appointments committee is saying yes to him and recommending him for those. And then we also interviewed Christopher Finley, and for the, one of the budget committee at-large seats, and we're recommending him also. So those are the amendments.
Excellent. Are there any public comments? Any, yes, there is, okay.
I'm not quite sure, Mari from Aldridge Road.
Yes.
I'm not quite sure if we're talking about town council committees yet, are we? Or you're just really talking?
Right now, we're talking about the committees, the, the open spots for budget committee and the Saco River group. Yes, ma'am. And then we'll talk about that, I guess, afterwards.
Think we need to talk about them?
If we need to talk about them, but.
I don't think we do.
Any other public comments? Any council comments?
Do you need a second to the amendment?
John's second.
Oh, I hear you.
I did, yeah. And so, actually, yes, let me back up. The first night. It was, it was, there was a motion, it was seconded, and all in favor. So it passes. Now, we did the public comments, so we will go to council comments.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to procedurally understand where we are. When you originally proposed this, you were vice chair. You've been elected chair. Are this, you were vice chair, you've been elected chair, are these appointments expected to change next month?
So first, I would like to vote on the first, the amendments, and then I can answer your question, absolutely. Are there any questions about the Saco River appointment or the budget committee appointment?
I have a point of order kind of related to that, and tell me if it's germane or not. I believe there was, when Councilor Leclerc was a member, a, an internet committee, and I don't, not sure the exact name or who from the council, or anyone, or what the status of that group is, in terms of internet services that the town, there was a presentation before the board, and I believe that Greg Leclerc was the last person that was serving on that group from the town council. Is that, where is that, is that on this list, or some other list, or what's happening with that?
Could you, could you repeat what group it was?
It was, there was a presentation by a group from Fries Island that had put together the Subega Lake Fiber Program.
I've never, never known.
Yeah, so it wa, it was not a committee, it was just a, a group coming in to try to advance the fiber wifi, and they had sent around, but there were, there was nothing official, there was no committee, and I think it was just a private scene if they could advance it, and-
Was it, was it not proposed by the Greater Portland Council?
It might have been recommended by them, yes, but it was, there was no committee. I was at that meeting, it was just trying to advance the fiber wifi, and I don't think that it went very far. It was residents could join it if they wanted to, it was separate of the town.
Okay.
Okay, if we could have a roll call for the amendments?
Yep, so it's, sorry, Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Which one do you want? Amendments for the board members?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
So that's seven yeses.
So passes. All right, so as we, we are talking about committees, you're, if you could repeat your question, please.
Sure, as vice chair, you made recommendations for committees. Now that you're chair, are your recommendations staying the same, or are we going to vote on new recommendations next month?
So I thought about it, and so when we put out the emails, or when Mary put out the emails, I didn't receive back some responses, so I, I kind of just went with, you know, what I did get back, right, which, like, I believe I left you on what you asked for, the ones you, you, you had stayed on, but Mr., Mr. Christie was not here at the time, he didn't, to, to receive an email or to get an email back. So I'm kind of, on, on one hand, I want to say that they're going to stay the same, because everybody had ample time to give, email me back and give me what they wanted, so I could review it and things like that, but then, on the other hand, you know, I'd love to probably give it another look, and with other people, with everybody's recommendations. So I, I, I would like to, at this, you know, get an email from Mr. Christie, from everybody else, and, and then I will relook at them, and then adjust if needed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Deacon?
The cemetery committee, when it was originally established, was to have public members, members from cemetery associations, town counselors, I would urge the appointments committee to review that original council vote in the, on the establishment of the cemetery committee, and take steps to hold open nominations for staffing the cemetery committee as originally designed.
Yes, please.
Yes, so I have the original order here. Are you talking about the Cemetery Exploratory Committee?
Yes.
Yep, and it does say that, just to read the, one of the paragraphs, the chair of the council is authorized to make appointments to that committee comprised of members from the association, one or more council members, and members of the public. So if you would like, I can go ahead and do a public ad to spark some interest and see who we get.
I would, I would appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Comment?
Mary had her hand up, but I think as part of procedure and charter, we have to have appointments made by the July meeting after the swearing-in of the new counselors, if that's correct.
Mary, could you come up? Because I believe I, I had talked to you before the meeting, but maybe we're wrong.
I think what the town council can do is waive the rules of procedure in this case, to allow, to extend the time, to have the new council chair seat their members.
I'll make a motion, we waive the procedural rules.
Second.
All in favor?
May I have a, a, an amendment?
So passes, but then, go ahead with yours.
If I may.
It was seven.
Okay, just making sure.
My amendment was to also suggest that it address the historical commission, which has vacancies, which have not been filled, and either have the appointments committee consider possible appointments, or in conversation with the chair, make a presentation to the council about whether or not the historical commission should be removed as a, as a group.
Not one time on the appointments committee that I can recall did we not accept anybody's application for any of these committees, but when nobody applies, it's kind of hard to, you can lead a hostile water, but you can't make them drink, and that's what we're up against, no one, no one wants to carry the load, you know, and that's what it is in this town. We carry the load right here.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if this clarifies or muddies the waters, but I believe that the, because the historic district was essentially repealed at some point in time, that there isn't a historic district for the commission to rule over, or monitor, or whatever. I'd like to see, I'd like to see more backing of the, the Standish Historical Society, which is its own little, its own body, but they're the ones, they're the ones who are carrying the water.
Okay.
But anyway, so that, I think that's why the his, the historic commission just has not existed.
Okay.
If that helps.
And just so the minutes are correct, I didn't raise my hand to all in favor of waiving the procedures.
Oh, okay, but we still have super, so, okay, thank you for clarifying that, thank you.
Six to one.
Okay, so, and then just one moment, I wanted to look up town code 181-129, but it sounds like Mary's already looked it up, so for speed, for, for the sake of time, I would love if you could chime in on that, because I'm not even there, Mary.
Yeah, so I think that the Historic Commission is addressed in chapter 181, and I, I don't have that in front of me, so I apologize. The planning board, it's under the planning board's jurisdiction.
Okay, so. There was a motion to waive the, or amend the-
Right, amend the procedures.
Procedures.
So that you could take, have another month, take a look.
We voted on it, it was all in favor, so that means we just tabled this?
Yeah.
We're not going to vote on it.
Yeah.
So you're suspending the rules of procedure that require-
Right.
That to be provided in July.
Yes.
It takes five members to, of affirmative vote to make that motion pass.
Yeah.
So point of order, do, are we not having the community ask questions on this now because we're thinking about waiving it?
Ask questions on the committees themselves?
On the committees, yeah, because I think Mary, or Mary, Maury was up earlier for the committees, but we weren't on those yet, and I don't think that we went back to the public.
If we're... I would, I would, I would say we could, I guess. I don't know the, we are, we are suspending it, we're not voting on it. Right now, I'm going to take it back and reconsider.
Order on the amendment, now you're going to ask for public-
Yeah, I will ask for a public, oh, yeah, so, are there any comments?
Maury Hill from Wildridge Road, just, you know, an observation, having looked at the suggested people-
Yes, ma'am.
In terms of the committees for the town council, and it just seems like you're sort of replacing Sarah Gabba with Lisa Strubing.
Yes, ma'am.
And, you know, it feels like it's kind of stuck. It, it feels like the committees need to be mixed up a bit. I'm, I'm just saying it as a citizen who, you know, talks to people, and I just think that, I would say that some people are relegated to less important committees on the town council, and it seems to me that there's an effort here to keep people in place, to keep people from really being able to be on committees that they perhaps should be on, or need to be on.
Okay.
So, so having said that, I'm glad that this has been delayed, and I hope that you really will look at creating some new pathways and some new committees, make up, make up of different committees. The other question I have for you is, what's the difference between the capital improvements committee and the finance committee?
I can answer that for you. So the capital improvements looks at major purchases, and the finance goes over every month we meet, and capital improvements is as needed. So finance looks, meets every Monday or the first of the month, and looks at our bills, our, signs off on our warrants, goes over like routine things, and capital is the major purchase items.
Okay, all right, I was just kind of confused about that. The other committee, I guess, is the appointments committee, and that looks like that is really kind of tied up in terms of three particular counselors, and it seems that maybe now, this year, now that you're entering the new year, now you're the leader of the town council, you know, that, that appointments committee could be modified somewhat in terms of membership. So that's something I would recommend. It just looks like you're stuck, you know, it looks like, okay, we did this, we're going to do this forever, and I'd like to see some, you know, mixing up of it. The other thing I would say, and I'm, this has nothing to do with appointments, but I would say, these three individuals over here, these three individuals over here, how about mixing them up too, in terms of where you sit? So it's not going to look like, oh, this is one side, and this is that side. So that's another thing I would say might look better. I don't know if it would, in practice, be better, but I think it would be helpful to all of the people in this town, and remembering that the town counselors represent everyone, not just a select few. So, thank you.
Appreciate your comments, thank you. Do you have a comment?
Chris Strubing, 188 Lake Road, I wanted to talk, Council Deacon mentioned the cemetery committee, and I, I would really love to see that come back up, because I, I don't think there's been a lot of movement around that.
Okay.
Being of veterans.
Yeah, yeah, right.
You know, it's important.
Yeah, I believe so too, yeah.
Just so you guys are aware, I'm not sure, Chris, if you knew that, town staff has gone to every cemetery and put a lot of work into it. There's actually a new story being done. They went and raked and maintained, and some of my staff are actually taking classes on headstone restoration, so we do take it quite seriously. It's just that we have 60 cemeteries, and, and it's been a long time since they were looked at, but with John Cross as our leader, they, they all have been looked at, and we plan to do that at least twice a year.
Real quick.
Maury Hill, Wildridge Road.
Yes.
I just want to clarify for everyone, what happens if a counselor resigns or can no longer serve? What is the process of, of appointment?
At that point, once we get the resignation letter, I believe that that seat would go forward to the appointments committee. The appointments committee would, you know, probably[1553.78][1553.81]interview, like we have been doing, interview candidates that would like to serve in that seat, and then they would appoint somebody who they feel would serve in that role, and then it would come to the town council, and the town council would have to vote on it, and, and then that person would sit in that seat for the remainder of the term, and then that seat would become a vacant, and we would have a, have an election. Did I say that right, Mary? I did not, totally wrong.
It's the remainder of the year.
That's what I said, remainder of the term, that term, the year term I meant, not the full, like, election term, like, it would finish out from now until next election.
Until next June.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Okay, I just was wondering, I wonder if that's something that, you know, I, I think one of the things we always struggle with, and Mary knows this too, is, you know, making sure people know what's going on, and I wonder if, should that occur, that some, there'd be a resignation or whatever, that people, I wonder if that would be worth an add, like in the shoppers.
It will, it's, it will, it will be advertised for sure, it's mandatory.
Yeah, good, great, thank you.
John?
Just a- One second, any other public comments? I will close public comments, no more public comments, council comments?
I just, I just want to say, any council can come to any meeting, just because it's an appointments, or a finance, or a capital, any council can come and sit in at these meetings. It's not, just because we're on these committees don't mean we can't go to other committees and sit in. I sit in now, and then on a few committees, but I know Lisa come in before she's a council, and sit in on the capital, and we welcome their input. It's, it's not like we're going in some back door and three of us are deciding, because anybody, any council can come into those meetings and listen to what we have to say.
Can we tonight vote on the appointments that you did in the committee today, for the budget committee and the Saco River?
I believe we did, right? Called roll call for that.
Well, yeah, we voted on to amend this, and then-
So can we bifurcate this, and, and get those appointments moving forward?
I agree.
That way those people can start serving.
I thought we did, I know we went all in favor, and then I thought we took a roll call, but we can do a roll call again for Chris Finley and Chris-
Should I make a motion?
Yes.
Would you like me to make a motion?
Yes, please, yep.
I move that we bifurcate order 75-25, and that the council only vote on the town council appointments of budget committee, Mr. Christopher Finley, the Saco River Joint Cable TV Committee alternate, Mr. Chris Strubing, and the Saco River Community TV Board of Directors alternate, Mr. Chris Strubing.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Two of them.
All in favor? Or, or do we do a roll call? Is it a vote?
Yeah, we can go and do a roll call. Gardner?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Pomelo?
Yes.
Strubing?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
That's seven yeses.
So passes.
Yep.
So before moving on, are there, yes, Mr. Deacon?
So with respect to some of the comments about the staffing of various committees by counselors, there's a couple things. When I was chair, I took great strides to ensure that there was some continuity on every committee, so that there wasn't necessary complete change, so that nobody had any- so that nobody had any history of what was done, at least recently, in the past. And I also tried, uh, hard to make sure people got mostly what their first picks were, to be on different committees. And to also perhaps try to have a, uh, groups of people that had maybe some different background or interests or experiences or, or otherwise to diversify committees. And it's not an easy thing to do. And I'm sure that, uh, Chair Gardner has put in a great deal of effort. One other thing that impacts the process that has come up earlier in this year is sometimes it's hard for, for counselors. You know, this is a, uh, an activity, although we get some remuneration, we also have lives to live and work and other medical appointments or whatever. And it would be helpful if, for two things to be done. One is to have, uh, uh, great effort taken to ensure that the meeting times for committees are such times so that it's practical for those who work to be able to attend. I understand that to some extent, they want to make some committee meetings during the day when the town employees are more able to attend. But it's also important that the public or counselors or other volunteers that want to be on committees have an opportunity to participate by, uh, uh, scheduling them at a time when they're not typical work times. That's one point. And another would be, I think it's helpful for the public, as well as counselors, to have a summary, a few sentences, a paragraph summarizing what each committee is about, how many people there are, what their terms might be, and what the topic or focus of the committee is, so that anyone who's interested can find out what really does the safety committee do. Uh, one of, one of the things is to run the safety fair that's held every year. But that's not readily apparent by just having the name "Safety Committee." But if there was a description of what each committee is, is about, more information, it might help the public, as well as potentially new counselors or anyone else, consider joining a committee to make sure they can get a place that interests them and, uh, better serve the community. But I, I do think it's important to address the issue of timing of meetings so that council members, the public, and those who volunteer for committees can more readily attend as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I believe that, uh, the times for meetings are based off of the chair and the other committee members. So, you guys, as a committee, I know we've set our time. Um, I know Mary has called and said, what's a good time? And then we set the time. So, I guess you, that could be done within the committee themselves. I know the, what you were saying, that's a great idea, uh, of a description of the committees, and that is on the website. If anybody would like to go on there and, and view what the committee is about and what they do, you're, you're more than welcome, uh, they are, they are on there. So, um, before I finish my, or have a comment, was there any other, anything else? So, I just wanna, uh, say, I appreciate all the comments, uh, suggestions and things like that. And, uh, Mr. Deacon, I use a word that I, I use a lot, continuity. And when I'm thinking about this, um, I got only a few emails back. Some people, if you don't, if you don't give me an email, tell me what you want. Uh, you know, I don't wanna move you, I'm gonna leave you pretty much like where you were. Um, I know my first year on, I was put on, you know, a few little committees and things like that. And then the next time I was moved in, it's like, you start learning one committee and then you get moved. So, I like continuity. And I, I think, for me personally, and I'm gonna re, definitely put some thought into it, but I like that, you know, one council member goes out, one comes in. Maybe they step into those ones for, for whatever. But, you know, if you, for one council, gave me four suggestions and got two of them. I mean, I can't, you can't get everything that you asked for, right? So, I definitely will take everything into consideration. And if everybody would like to email me by, by next Friday, that gives you a little over a week now. I will, and then it gives me enough time to, before the next meeting, to sit down, think about it, and put serious thought into it. And, but if I don't receive an email, then I'm, it's, you know, I think you, you gotta be, take what you get, if that's fair enough, being blunt, okay? So, by next Friday, if everybody can give me an email, I would appreciate that. Moving on, Angela?
Yep, so, um, next item would be public items.
Come on up, Mr. Farley.
Oh, did I, sorry, hang on, I forgot. There it is. You're good, you're good. All right, public items.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Omar Farley, resident of Sandish. I would like to know what's going on with our property at the end of Maple Street. There's, it's written on the road that they wanna tear up, remove three hundred feet of pavement from the wharf to the railroad track. And this is the Portland Water District. We own the street to the water.
I can help you, Mr. Farley.
Can you?
Right here.
Mr. Farley? Right here.
Oh, yeah. I'm looking around.
Don't worry, we got you.
I got you. So, we are planning on having a workshop to talk about it in August. The short story is, we have a right of way, we do not own it. The Water District talked to us about the rainwater rushes down the tar and affects the lake in a negative way. Yeah, so a scientist, not my, not my, not his, but a scientist tells us that if the tar is gone, we could have an ADA path to the, to the fishing pier. But they put some crushed gravel and some other materials in, um, some mulch. And so, um, we could still use the pier, there's still...
Do you realize that?
There's still parking.
I'm sorry.
Nope. And, um, so we're gonna, we're gonna workshop about it. We're getting prices and bringing information to the council.
You realize that once the Water District takes that over, we'll lose that wharf?
No, we're, we're gonna get an MOU. No, we, we would not do this without it. We told, I met with them today, in fact, and we would have to have a lease.
There's people like me that go down there every day.
Yep, we realize.
And I can't walk down there, I drive down. That's our road. I don't care if it's leased or what. If it's leased, we pay for it. But right now, the Water District, once they get their foot in, we have lost it, like everything else they've done.
I'll let you know when our meeting is, but I would love for you to come to hear the details.
I was gonna say, are you gonna let the people in Sandish know?
Absolutely, we always, we advertise all of our meetings. It would be an August work.
I have to find out all this myself.
We can help you sign up for news and announcements. And, uh, your son can help you with that too. I, I'll work with him. We, we send out all of our meetings, we send an email and a text.
All right, I appreciate that.
Absolutely. No, it's a, we, we are, we are, we're working through it with our attorneys. We have a right of way.
We have a right of way, I believe they own the actual land. We just have a right of way through it.
They own the land?
They own the land.
We have a right of way.
So, technically, they can do what they want with the land, but we have the right to go through it.
John, that, you're, agree, disagree? What's the piece?
I disagree, but...
Yeah.
I...
I think we oughta go to court and find out.
There's a right of way that extends beyond the roadway. Like, I believe Chad said today, he confirmed that we own the roadway. We have to give up.
That is our land.
We would still retain a right to cross. I believe, I believe that's...
So, it's, we're, we have our attorneys involved in it, it's messy.
Nice.
And can I get a copy of that when it comes through?
Absolutely. It would be public record once we have it.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Mr. Pomelo.
Mr. Farley, he's going the other way. I wanna, I wanna let you know that we talked about this a little bit in Capitol today. We heard about it tonight, we talked about it. And we brought your name up and we felt that any discussion we had in our Capitol, that we'd like to invite you, because we know you're passionate about that area and we'd like to have your input. So, actually, your name was mentioned in our committee tonight to come forward with us and, and try to work out the best plan for people like you that go there. Cause I don't go there, I don't know if anybody on this board goes there really like you do.
I've gone there for over seventy years.
You will be included in there if you'd like to be, because your name was brought forward today in our meeting.
I've been waiting to hear from DOT. They're supposed to send me that thing on the railroad track too, where we're, they're paying to dig that up.
We will keep you in the loop, I promise you that.
I, I would appreciate that very much, thank you very much.
Thank you. I just wanna thank you for your passion down there, because it's very important.
He still maintains the railroad tracks.
Go on with what he's saying.
Name an address, please.
Anthony Folsom.
Thank you.
Okay. With the understanding of the expansion of the road down there, I was told that the water that was coming down the road into Calvert's was going up by Johnson Elementary, the old school, and then into the lake. Why are we not concerned with that water? And now, all of a sudden, we're concerned with a little bit of water coming off of a small road?
They are, they are addressing that, so... I can discuss the, uh, so the project, they are removing the old yellow pump house that is over by the Sandish Brook. They're removing the old pump house that is by the, um, fishing pier. Uh, the right of way is, what we're talking about is the pier and the lease to the pier. Uh, the question is, they would also like to see the roadway removed, uh, from the tar, from the asphalt down.
Okay, and what I'm saying is, are they gonna do anything with the water that's coming down off the hill? Are they gonna purify that, do anything with that?
They have offered to be a part of the grant process. So, when we applied for a grant, Portland Water gave us a letter of support saying that they would offer services to help with that, to do that, for the Molton's Hill project, for that. Cause we asked the Water District with their support, we thought it would enhance for us to get the grant. We didn't get the grant. So, MDOT is currently doing that scoping project. We don't know what they're gonna do until two thousand twenty-seven, at, at the earliest, uh, at that time. But our goal is to have a seat at the table, so we can address that water coming down off Molton's Hill. And they would like to have a seat at the table as well.
So, we're gonna give them the road, or give them that?
We're not giving them anything.
We're not giving them anything yet.
This is, the goal is to make this, if something is to happen, is better for the residents. A new fishing pier, new walkways, new area for parking, new area for, uh, a hiking trail. The goal is to make it better if it's gonna happen. But again, this is just in a design, we don't even have a design yet type of deal. The goal is just to come up with, right now, is with a MOU to say, yes, we're willing to work together to this, to get to this end goal. But we're not there yet. I mean, there's no details of what's actually gonna happen.
Point of information, if I may. Has those buildings that they're talking about to be removed been assessed for their historical significance?
That, that I, that I don't know. We, I mean, I've been dealing with the roadway issues I haven't been dealing with.
Thank you.
So, I just wanted to know, I, I understand where Mr. Farley's coming from. And just by curing one little problem is not taking care of the big problem.
I agree, thank you.
Izzy Higgins, two fifteen Bonny Eagle Road. I hear the need for ADA compliance all over the project that they're talking about in a lot of different ways. And that, that, the, the PT in me just says, as long as it's gonna allow everybody...
We did a talk about that already.
That's one of the things.
It's gonna be an engineered project, I mean, it's gonna be all...
Okay, good, that's just, it triggered.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna put in a plug for the workshop on July twenty-second, for anybody listening at home. This is the comp plan workshop. One of the things that drives me craziest is people coming in after the fact and complaining. So, be part of the solution. We've had, we've had a couple of workshops, this is, or a couple of different meetings, public meetings. This is another chance. And this is a joint, you guys are gonna be there. We need more people from the public, so drag 'em in, kicking and screaming, are you listening at home? Six PM here, um, on the twenty-second of July. And we need to know more what people are thinking. The information is the current plan, um, in its current form, which is not finished by any means. And, um, as you talked about, um, or mentioned earlier, there's gonna be a lot of detail that has to be addressed once the plan itself is adopted in terms of taming the form-based code, making things more user-friendly, specifically for businesses, yada, yada, yada. And if people have issues about what the plan current, it says in its current form, it is available on the website. If you have problems, contact Zach. Because, um, we need, I'm not, I'm not a real tech person. And I've, I've managed to get there and, and find out a lot of the stuff. But it's not intuitively obvious for people who don't use technology. So, um, people need, they, they need to be able to, um, look at it and then come to talk about it on the twenty-second. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mona?
Omar Farley again. I would like to ask that young lady where we, where you found out that we had a, a right of way?
We found an old deed when we were researching.
Did you ever find another deed that said that we owned it?
We never found, we never found a deed, Mr. Farley. We found that the road used to be called Park Street and Park Street shows going to the water.
Yes.
And so, the, that's what we presented and we, in eighteen eighty, there was a recording in the town saying...
Nineteen, like nineteen sixteen?
It's a three-rod road to Sebagel Lake.
Yep.
Is what, uh, what we found for documentation of that. But again, the right of way issue becomes at the end of the roadway, a right to cross their land to get onto the fishing pier. That's where the right of way issue, that's what we're paying for, for a lease, is my understanding. Is that correct? Zach, am I...
And, and that, well, we're paying for the, for the fishing pier itself.
And paying for the fishing pier itself.
So, we don't, we only have a right of way to the pier?
To cross, to cross the land to get to the pier, that's where the right of way... Is coming in. The roadway, we believe, or I believe, is ours, cause it shows that it goes down there and was called Park Street originally. And there's a, like I said, a documentation of that.
Because all that was there many, many years before the Water District was ever there.
I'll be more than glad to, if you come up and we can discuss this, or what, I, I just, I feel...
So, point of note, I think we need to stop this conversation, cause we're, we're all over the place here. And I think we need to get some ducks in water.
So, Mr. Farley, uh, if you wanna come to the workshop, that would where, you'll get a lot of your answers. And a lot of, uh, information will be put out at the workshop.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so... Any other public comments?
Oh, no, he's just...
Close public comments?
Just stretching.
Uh, are there any announcements?
There are no announcements.
No announcements?
I just wanna take this moment to thank Mary. Today was her last day after thirty-some, six, seven, eight, nine years. So, Mary, thank you.
Giving you the light a lot, but...
Would you like to say something, or you could? Do it.
It's our last opportunity as a town of glory.
I wanna say I'm grateful for the years that I've worked here. I'm blessed for the people I've met, the council, the townspeople, the employees, the awesome staff that I have. Couldn't have wanted anything else. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
There are no, uh, there is no executive session tonight?
Correct.
Anybody wanna make an emotion?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
We have a motion adjourned with a second, all in favor? We are adjourned.